has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was provided in a notice of January 28th, 2020, said notice was posted at the interest of the Board of Education offices, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, sent to tap into Nutley, advertised in Nutley Sun on February 6th, 2020, and posted on the district website. A revised meeting notice was sent out on July 23rd, 2020, advertising that this meeting was a virtual online meeting. Have the flags salute please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America. And to the open public, we just stand one nation, indivisible, and one with the people, for all. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Kuzma.
Mr. Cornisella?
Here.
If I could, just one second. If you're not speaking, please put your mics on mute, please. All right, start again, Madeline, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Here.
Mr. De Mayo?
Here.
Mr. Ferraro?
Here.
Mrs. Quirk?
Here.
Mr. Riley? No. Okay. Mr. Scolera?
Here.
Ms. Arrow?
Here.
Mr. Kaczynski?
Here. I need approval of the minutes for the open public meeting app on June 22nd, 2020.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Glazer, before we start, I just would like to remind everybody again and our audience, please, if you're not speaking, put your mic on mute. I had hoped to have Mr. Riley do the personnel report. Since he's not here, Ms. Quirk, do you mind doing a personnel report?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Do you want me to do it now, or?
No, no, I'm sorry. When it comes out, the resolution, I meant.
No problem.
Dr. Glazer, I'm sorry, you're up.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome once again. I am thrilled to have so many people on the call. It always makes me really happy, so different than being by ourselves in the auditorium. So, welcome. My report tonight is threefold, so bear with me. Last Thursday night, the minutes you just approved was this year's board retreat. Every year, the board comes together to have the opportunity of setting their board goals and all of us together, the district goals for the following year. As part of that retreat, we also set goals for the budget. Mr. De Pisa shared the draft budget calendar. And Mr. Bagna and Mrs. Locan Solo shared a number of ideas that have been happening in our 17 task force meetings. I'm not sure if everybody knows, but the Board of Education can only have conversations in public to come all together as a whole board of nine. So, we very often have to have conversations, ask questions, answer questions, and perhaps that can be confusing. So, I do want to make sure that anybody that was with us for the retreat, and again, I'm thrilled, it'll be kind of already have a deflated sense before I tell you the goals, you already know. But for anybody that was on that call and thought that we presented a draft plan of our restart reentry that goes to the state, or any version of a schedule, that is not true. We shared all of the curricular ideas. We shared none of what the day looks like. We were not able to have any conversations about screening or daily contact tracing, or what the entry and exit would look like, what the length of the day would be, even what instruction's going to look like. So, I'm hopeful for some of you that we've heard from through emails, I'm not on social media, but for the people that screenshotted me, that you were able to ask your questions, but I encourage you to join us in the conversations as we continue. We have one, two, three, four more committee meetings this week. We have a second survey happening on Wednesday, so there's lots of room for everybody to be a part of those ongoing conversations before they're done. And there really isn't anything new to share tonight. The second thing that we did at the retreat besides having a chance to share ideas and ask questions is to do our annual goal setting. And tonight, on the board agenda, you'll see a resolution to adopt the 2021 district goals and the 2021 Board of Education goals. I don't know if Charlie, you want to present the board goals? And I'll come back to the district goals.
You want, yes, we can do that now if you'd like. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You go ahead with board goals, we got them.
The board goal. Okay, the board goals for 2021, 2020 and 2021. By June 2021, Board of Education members will continue to address overcrowding, aging facilities, and safety and security, prioritizing the discussion of this topic with the township and community stakeholders. But number two, by June 2021, Board of Education members will ensure that the community understands the district's budget process and maximizes engagement from the board as a whole. Number three, by June 2021, the Board of Education will help the Nutley community understand the key roles and responsibilities of the board and its members. By June 2021, the Board of Education, number four, by June 2021, the Board of Education will ensure proper policies, processes, and resources to achieve district goals, all through the lens of a financial sustainability. And just so the public should know, and it's sometimes difficult to do this virtually, many, many, many hours of volunteer board membership time was put into compiling these goals for the board and also the district goals. And so, I want to thank the board members, all of us who have been involved in doing this. It's tiresome, it's thankless, it's rewarding at the same time for what we're doing for our district and our children, but I appreciate the time that we all put in. Thank you, Dr. Glazer.
Thanks, Charlie. And those district goals, so you know, they are dynamic goals. We put them, the board and the district goals, on every single committee agenda. So, they're there in front of us. They are tied to our strategic plan goals and our strategic plan action committees, and their goals do drive all of our work. If you're interested in seeing any of the vision or mission that starts that, it is on the district website. You can go right under the district tab, and you'll find the strategic plan. Under the strategic plan, you'll see each of the four areas. You'll see the vision, mission, what we believe, even some of the delimiters. So, really interesting for those of you that maybe are new for us. As far as the district goals, we did set our district goals as well that night. By June 2021, multiple data sources will be used to drive virtual hybrid instruction and closely monitor curriculum, new programs and district scheduling to foster professional growth and help improve student performance. By June 2021, to design and implement a comprehensive pre-K to 12 approach to student and staff safety, health, and wellness, especially during the reentry to school period, while navigating through the health challenges and aligning with federal, state, and local guidelines. By June 2021, the district will take intentional and ongoing action to increase equitable and inclusive opportunities for inclu- sorry, inclusive opportunities for all, while expanding the diversity of our entire educational system. And by June 2021, the district will collaborate with local, state, and national organizations as well as utilize internal resources to evaluate current procedures and identifying new methods of security, while continuing to promote the philosophy of see something, say something. So, those goals, again, those eight goals together, guide our work as an administrative leadership team, as a board, as a district. And again, they're on the agenda tonight for approval to adopt. The final thing that I would like to talk about tonight is a little bit sad for me. I had just gone to an anti-racism training with Learning Forward New Jersey and had found the quote by John Lewis about good trouble, good trouble being necessary trouble. And I posted it on my calendar above my desk. If you follow me on Twitter for the district, I posted it on the district site. And unfortunately, John Lewis did pass away just two weeks later. So, I want to share with you the quote in his honor and hope that we motivate and inspire everybody with us tonight and all of those who may watch this later to also get in some good trouble. "Don't get lost in a sea of despair. Be hopeful. Be optimistic. Our struggle is not the struggle of a day, a week, a month, or a year. It's the struggle of a lifetime. Never, ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble. Necessary trouble. In honor and in peace." John Lewis, 1940 to 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer, and I'm sure quite a few of us have been following the John Lewis episode up until his crossing the bridge today or yesterday. And he was a strong leader, a valiant man, and that was a nice quote from him. And I don't think, and I don't mean our board members, but the public should just kind of breeze over our board criteria, our district criteria. We, as board members, take it very, very, very seriously. Everything that was mentioned tonight, we will spend a lot of time trying to resolve some of those issues that we have educationally, academically, personally. So, I wanted to thank my board members again, and certainly make sure the public realizes what is involved. Hello, Mr. Riley, how are you? Realizes what goes on behind the scenes with all of us. And again, thank you very much. Mr. De Pisa.
Thank you, Mr. Kaczynski. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for welcoming me into the district. It's been a very exciting but very busy month of July, my first month. I presented a schedule to Dr. Glazer, which she approved, to bring back the business office staff on a socially distant and staggered schedule, and it's going well. So, I appreciate the approval, and I appreciate everyone's hard work from the business office. Just so you're aware, I drafted an updated purchasing manual, an updated standard operating procedure manual that's being reviewed in the business office. And then, I'm going to put it into the finance committee, and then, we'll be board-approved within the next 60 days. That was drafted as well. I can tell you that I've recommended to the finance committee, and from now on, going forward, you will see any purchases exceeding $6,000 on the finance agenda for board approval. Any single purchase for $6,000 will be approved by the board under finance. We received a state aid loss in total. The notice was sent out, I believe, July 10th, we received the notice. The total is $132,182 in corresponding with the county office. You'll see under item 23 tonight, under finance. I had to go ahead to use our unbudgeted extraordinary aid to make up for that money, so we don't have to cut any appropriations in the budget. So, you'll be approving that under number 23. And last but not least, I've been in touch with the auditor, and they're going to start the payroll audit procedures sometime in August due to the retirement of Joanne Torres. And then, they'll be into the district for the regular audit items sometime in September and October. I can tell you that Mr. Perigi is very proactive and working very, very hard with all that's going on with reentry, and he does an outstanding job. So, as does everybody else. Thank you for this opportunity to report, and I look forward to another good month of August.
I hope so. Thank you, Mr. De Pisa. Mr. Perigi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Enviro- Enviro Connections was in the high school on July 9th, taking samples of wall plaster to give us a detailed report on the potential asbestos. The report should be completed in the next week. We met with Enviro Vision, environment consultants in the high school library to go over the asbestos abatement of the floor tile in the library. The project will be bid and be completed in the school year of 2021. We completed our fire inspection. We have our list of violations that we need to be, get completed. We don't have any major violations, but we need to start updating our systems. We met with the Yannacall PTO to go over a possible outdoor space located in the back of the school. Design and price to be determined. They also requested we get an estimate for paint and auditorium. Estimate is in, waiting for a second. Albright Electric has completed three schools with our LED lighting. Sorry, that's four schools updated today, sorry. The Park Oval project is as follows. All these dates are subject to change, but we are confident in the timing. 8/3 to 8/7 conduits for future lights will be installed. 8/10 to 8/14 musco bases arrive and installed. 8/17 to 8/21 new PSCNG pole will be installed for future lighting. Also, paving will be completed. 8/24 to 8/28, the turf arrives and install starts. 8/31 to 9, yes. 8/31 to 9/4, turf install continues and is completed. 9/7 to 9/11 scoreboard and new sound system installed. Still finalizing the final information on that project, on the scoreboard and the sound install. And finally, the Nutley Shaytree Commission and the Township of Nutley helped remove five trees from the Park Oval. Our grounds department was also on site assisting with the tree removal. This shared service agreement has helped the Nutley BOE save on these services that in the past have cost the district thousands of dollars. This could not have been possible without the cooperation of Mayor Tucci and Dr. Glazer. Thank you, Mayor Tucci. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Perigi, and I'd like to just add on to that. Between the road department, Commissioner Strappelli, the mayor's department, Commissioner Mayor Tucci, Frank De Mayo, Shaw Ferrara, and your team, and their team, if you were there when their trees were being removed like we were, and you saw the working together, it's nice to see that. I know it saves us money, but the camaraderie between the township and the Board of Education is improving every day, and I attribute some of that to you and certainly to their team also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had one question, but I'll think of it later. Okay, committee reports. Mr. Ferrara, can you give us an update on the finance committee?
Yes, Mr. President. Finance committee met on July 21st at 4:00 PM. Mr. Perigi discussed the ongoing facility project, which he just referenced a few minutes ago at the Nutley High School, including the library, the fire safety recommendations, the Yannacall outdoor classroom, meeting space, and the ongoing Oval project. Mr. De Pisa discussed the CARES Act funding, the annual COLA invoice. He also discussed his working with the auditors regarding issues with the 1095 filings. Mr. De Pisa discussed the draft and purchasing manual and the standard operating procedure document. These documents will be reviewed at the next finance meeting as well as presented to the other committees and board members for their review. Mr. De Pisa discussed the Amazon National Co-op Board, which is on tonight's resolution, finance resolutions. Mr. De Pisa discussed and reviewed the Office of Physical Compliance forms. And he also updated the committee on the loss of the state aid. And we also discussed and reviewed tonight's finance resolutions. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 25th.
Charlie, you're on mute.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Cornisella, we'll go back to you since you didn't hear me. My fault. Can you give us an update on the administration committee, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to ask, do you want me to do the long-range facility right after that?
Why not? Definitely.
All right, so we're going to start off with administration. The administration committee met on July 21st at 6:00 PM. In attendance was myself, Mr. Scolera, Mr. Riley, and Dr. Glazer. Dr. Glazer and myself reported on the long-range facilities meeting to be held the following day, which is what I will be reporting on. The committee had a general conversation regarding the Oval project. Thank you, Mr. Perigi, for bringing us up to the timeline, because that's also in the long-range facility as well. The Safety and Security Strategic Plan Committee and the Restart and Reentry Task Force are both meeting tomorrow, July 28th. The Configuration and Infrastructure Task Force is meeting on Thursday, July 30th. Dr. Glazer shared an opportunity to use an allocation of food services money for operating expenses, freeing up some of the CARES Act funds for other uses. Dr. Glazer shared information from the auditor and health manager regarding 1095 filings and allocated surplus. Dr. Glazer also detailed a loss in state aid, which we just heard about from Mr. De Pisa. And Dr. Glazer reviewed several legal updates related to COVID and the new FMLA laws, as well as what is necessary for accommodations for high-risk staff and students. Dr. Glazer reviewed the BA and Assistant Superintendent's contracts and detailed cost list with the draft of an updated organizational chart. Our next meeting of the finance committee will be scheduled for Tuesday, August 25th at 6:00 PM. That concludes the administration committee report, and I'm going to move over to long-range facilities. Long-range facilities met on 7/22. The meeting started at 5:00 PM. In attendance was myself, Trustee Riley, Trustee Dancheck Martin, Trustee Ferraro, Dr. Glazer, and Mr. Perigi. The long-range facility committee met on 7/22. The committee discussed a five-year long-range facilities plan. This five-year plan is developed and reviewed annually. Its purpose is to identify building improvements and needs, including all areas and infrastructure within the Nutley Public School District. Included in the discussion were architects to develop conceptual designs, cost estimates, and timelines for construction and completion of secure entrance to the Yannacall School. We continue to update the public as additional information is available to share. This project was part of our capital projects for 2021, 2020, 2021 budget year, which began on July 1st of 2020. The committee discussed setting a meeting with Spring Gardens PTO. There's been an interest for Spring Gardens to refurbish the seating in the auditorium. Soon after our meeting in March, the district was closed. And as stated in our March meeting, the committee agreed to set a time to discuss and share ideas with Spring Gardens PTO and facilitate a meeting hopefully when school is back in session. The committee discussed the purchase of property from the Reformed Church. This resolution was passed two years ago, and hopeful the purchase will be completed this school year. The Oval timeline was discussed by Mr. Perigi. So, he's got the timeline set better than me. I just had no idea that it was going to be complete by the opening of school. The Demuro Field was also discussed. This property is co-owned with the Township of Nutley. The Township was able to secure funds to provide renovations to the track-through green acres, and the board worked closely in updating our shared service and memorandum of agreement to ensure the funding needed to complete the scope of work that we had the paperwork appropriate to secure the funding of the work that needed to be done. Work will begin shortly and anticipated completion in early fall. Last, our meeting closed with a 30-second rendition of Barry Manilow's Weekend in New England sung by our very own Trustee Riley. That was our meeting. We adjourned at 6:30.
Too bad I missed that one. Thank you, Mr. Cornisella. Mrs. Dancheck Martin, academic, please.
Sure, the academic committee meeting, the academic committee met on July, Wednesday, July 22nd. Dr. Glazer discussed the recommendation of pushing the first day of students back to after the Tuesday, after Labor Day. This will provide faculty and staff with three full days of professional learning to prepare for the modified instructional model and hybrid virtual learning. Mr. Bagna and Ms. Locan Solo provided the academic committee with an update to current reopening planning in both the secondary and elementary schools. The update included explanation of the overall components of the plan as well as initial feedback and reasoning. The plan continues to receive feedback from all stakeholders as the district continues all options to meet the needs of the students. Ms. Locan Solo shared the results of a teacher survey surrounding the initial implementation of Mystery Science. The teachers' feedback suggested a positive learning experience and implementation. Ms. Locan Solo provided an update for the committee on the expansion of Foundations to Grade 2 and the corresponding resolution for approval. Foundations is a research-based set of materials and strategies essential to comprehensive reading and spelling. Mr. Bagna and Ms. Locan Solo also spoke to resolutions surrounding math and focus materials, ELAPD Provider, Gravity Goldberg Title I's funds that will be on the academic resolutions tonight. Ms. Locan Solo spoke to the implementation resolution to move forward with the social and emotional curriculum. The curriculum will be critical as the district emphasizes the social and emotional learning needs associated with remote instruction and the pandemic. The curriculum was selected by the Health and Wellness Strategic Plan Committee, which included Ms. Arrow, Ms. Quirk, as well as Ms. Locan Solo, Ms. Vidiallo, and Ms. Gergens. A portion of the funds to support this will be taken out of Title IV funds. Ms. Locan Solo highlighted the progression and process of creating at-home learning kit lists for students to support projected remote learning needs. She also shared with the committee the communication and information for incoming kindergarten families, and shared a communication that went out to all elementary students with digital resources to support summer learning. For the CARES Act money will be used to support safety, student safety and building preparation and cleaning for the return to school this fall. Dr. Glazer communicated future meetings, including Long Range Facility Planning Committee on July 22nd, the Security Strategic Plan and Task Force Committee on July 28th, and the Configuration and Infrastructure Task Force meeting on July 30th. She also provided finance information to the committee regarding food service, operating expenses, 1095 filings, budgeted surplus, and state aid, and also provided legal and personnel updates to the committee. The next meeting is scheduled for August 26th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dancheck. Ms. Arrow, can we get an update on the policy committee, please?
Yes. Hi, everybody. The Policy Committee met on the 22nd at around 7:30, maybe a little bit later. So, there's not many things on for first reading tonight, and I don't want anyone to take that as something that it's not. The policy right now is obviously a very busy, overwhelming time. Some of these policies aren't something we could just breeze through where they're mandatory and you just need to update them and/or change language. Obviously, with these unprecedented times, there's a lot going on. So, August's policy update will be a lot busier and a lot longer. But we did go over the organizational chart. As many of you know from the last meeting, we now have an Assistant Superintendent that had to be added into it. The Restart and Recovery Plan was the focus of our conversation. So, those are the things that are on for first reading tonight. And like I said, August will produce a lot more policy updates and minutes. Just know that we are looking at each and every one line by line, because, like I said, this is something we need to get right during these times. Thank you.
And I thank you and your committee for the hard work you put in. I've served on that committee. I know it's grueling. And for all of us, and I want the public to hear it, this is just a brief idea of what's going on behind the scenes with your elected board members every day. Every day, one or two of us or three of us are conversing about some issues that are going on or some policies we want to look at. So, I appreciate all of your help sincerely.
Thank you.
Mr. Perigi, I thought of what I forgot. And I'm not, it wasn't that long ago. I know you were working on that hallway, the sports or academic hall, athletic hallway. Those, we talked about those plaques that need to be sent out for repair, not by us, but by the third half club. I know that's being taken care of somehow.
We're waiting for the asbestos report to come back.
Oh, so we haven't touched them yet?
No, they were not. They're not. They can't touch them until we get the report back.
I understand that. I didn't know how far we had gotten with that.
Yeah, waiting for the report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on resolutions only. Our Board Regulation Number 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within that requirement. Speakers may speak more than one. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. I will remind the public, and as we have in the past, it's a busy night. It's a busy, busy time of the year. I'm going to try to hold, with Ian's help, the comments to the three-minute timeline so we can get through all of our discussions if we have that tonight or any one of our board meetings. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions at this time on board resolution items? Ian?
There are currently no resolution questions.
How did I know that, Ian? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Resolutions. Academic, Mrs. Dancheck Martin, please.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move Academic Resolutions 1 through 8 as written.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Academic Resolution Number 5, Math and Focus. Is this a yearly fee? Is it a one-time fee? For each school, it looks like probably totals close to $200,000 if not over.
Yes. Dr. Glazer. Janine Locan Solo.
Yes, hi. So, Mr. Ferraro, that is, we're transitioning to the updated version of Math and Focus. So this will have our K1 and 2 with updated Math and Focus. Now, that also includes updated digital resources for virtual learning as well. So we're continuing to make that transfer little by little, so it won't always be as high as it is there.
So also, the question is, is it yearly or this larger at this time but less as we transition forward?
Yes, it's larger at this time, and it will be less transitioning forward.
Thank you. Mr. Ferraro, you okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Kukuzin.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mr. Cornisella, will you take Administration Resolutions, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move Administration Resolutions 1 through 3 as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mr. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Ms. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mr. Ferraro, will you take Finance Resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President. I move Finance Resolutions 1 through 23 as written.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mrs. Kazinsky, can I make a statement on Number 4?
Yes, sir, Mr. Scolera.
So that's in reference to the renewed sheriff's decision. While that has worked out between us and the township, it's a shared service between the district. Dr. Alessio has been involved, and I think Dr. Glazer will state that, with our COVID processing, with our students, with everything. This has truly been a great service, and I'm glad that we entered into it, and I think it's been to the benefit of our school district totally, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scolera. Any other discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Kukuzin, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes, abstaining on Number 22.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. I would please remind board members again and public, if you're not speaking, please put your microphones on mute. Personnel Resolution, Mrs. Quirk, please.
Yes, Mr. President. I move Personnel Resolutions 1 and 2 as written. Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley? Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. Ms. Arrow, will you take Policy Resolutions, please?
Yes, I'd like to move Policy Resolution 1 as stated.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay.
I thought everyone forgot about me.
We had seven seconds. Discussion.
I do have one piece that I would like to talk about on Policy 1110 on the organizational chart. I just wanted to make a suggestion to the Policy Committee. I know there's been a little bit of conversation about the flow on that order.
Mr. Cornisella, please. Whoever is not speaking, you have to put your microphone off, including the audience.
Okay, we look good now? All right, so I was, okay, so I just wanted to ask if the Policy Committee could look into this particular policy just to maybe provide some type of asterisk with some details on the flow of that chart. Because I know it's come up with some questions. I know this is the first reading. I can talk a little bit more in depth in the Policy Committee if necessary, just to kind of give some ideas on maybe how to make it a little bit clearer on the organizational chart of flow up to the superintendent because I think the way that it reads now provides a little bit of confusion for the board members, but it also may provide some confusion to the public. So I just want to make sure that if there is a way that we can make it a little clearer that between now and the second reading that we just look into it a little bit deeper and see if we can add maybe an asterisk with an explanation on one or two of the spots in the chain of command moving upward.
Yeah, Charlie, can I say something?
Of course.
So Danny, I know you know we've been struggling over the double lines and everything like that. So I know there's only three of us on the committee, so if you want to join in and any help or guidance you want to give would be appreciated just because it's off-kilter and because it's confusing to us, right? So obviously, it's going to be confusing to the public. Anything we could do to make it more transparent, I think, and clearer to everybody probably would be the best-case scenario.
Oh, thank you. I know we've had, I'm sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, no problem. I will certainly sit in on the next Policy Committee. And the benefit is, is that, you know, the first reading is really set for us to be able to, you know, look at these policies and if we need to make any little changes to it before we move it to second, you know, now's the time, so.
I'm good. You pass the torch to me. I'm more than happy to share the torch.
Easy, easy. Thank you very much. And I know we have discussed this, but there, and I know it'll continue in the right direction. We know, we know the direction that we mean. It might not be as clear as it should be, but I'm sure we'll take care of it. Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cornisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allows 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes, and I would ask you to abide by that. And we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions? Ian Vemeister.
There are currently four people on the list. Dorothy McMullin, you had a question earlier. Dorothy McMullin, are you still on? Do you still have a question? You can unmute yourself.
I'm trying, I'm sorry. I was trying to unmute. I couldn't find the right button. Hi, everyone. I was just wondering, how do we join a task force meeting to be part of what's happening in developing the virtual and hybrid learning environments come September?
Okay, Dr. Glazer, I know you're here.
I am. Dorothy, just shoot me an email. We have the last curriculum meeting on Friday. We have configuration on Thursday. We have safety and security tomorrow, so shoot me an email, jglazer, G-L-A-Z-E-R, at nutleyschools, plural, schools.org. Let me know what you're interested in, and we'll get you a link.
All right, wonderful. I'm already creating the email for you, so you'll receive it in five minutes. Thank you.
Well, I'll see it afterwards, but thank you.
And Mrs. McMullin, I'm sure you know, this, I think Dr. Glazer said it before, it's like our 17th meeting that's been going on throughout the last couple of months.
Yes, and I didn't know. I didn't know how to join the meetings. I'm doing the same thing in my district with stakeholder meetings continuously. So, you know, I live in this district, and I'd like to know what's going on.
We look forward to your input. Thank you. Ian, who is next?
Paul Casaccio? You can unmute.
Hi, everybody. I'm unmuted now. So my question is, my wife and I received an email. You know, we have two sons, and our oldest son is six. He's going to be seven, and he's going into the first grade, starting this school year coming up. And we live in Yankacaw, Yankacaw, Yantacaw. And he received an email, we received an email that there's no guarantee that he is going to be able to go to that school in our town. There is a possibility that he may have to go to another school due to overcrowding. And so, you know, it kind of threw us off guard. You know, also, we do, like I said, we do have another son who's four, who's also going to be going to school in Nutley. And, you know, when the time comes, obviously, we want them to both be together. You know, we've been living here for seven years. Our kids were not born here when we moved here. And, you know, that was always one thing that we always couldn't wait for, was for them to go to school, you know, in the area that we live. And then also that, you know, even though my son did not go to kindergarten in Nutley, he's still been very active in sports with a lot of kids that do go to the school in Yankacaw. So I just wanted to just see if you could shed a little light on the email. And I was just curious, like, was he hand-selected? Does it go out to every student's parents? So I think you see where I'm coming from, and I'll leave it to you guys.
Mr. Casaccio, is that the way you pronounce it?
It's been butchered my whole life, but you've got it. You hit it right on the nail.
Well, that's good. Of course, with a name like Kazinsky, I deal with the same thing. But aside from that, we all appreciate your plight. We are aware of what's going on. I think Dr. Glazer will certainly give you better information than I can, except that I know there's approximately 149, 150 cases that we're looking at throughout the district trying to fit into their home school, per se. But Dr. Glazer, I'm sure you have more to say.
Don't I always? Hi, sir. So did you just register your child for first grade?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's why you received the letter. The Nutley Public Schools have a significant issue with overcrowding and enrollment. We have a class-size guideline that we follow. We're already above our guideline, and we're above the state guideline in making those decisions. So as children register, when those sections are closed, we notify you that there is not a guarantee that your child will be in your home school, even though it is your home school. And for that, I am so sorry and I apologize. It's been an ongoing issue. We have a number of students throughout the district who, unfortunately, were displaced or are displaced because of the overcrowding issues. We usually don't make a decision on the enrollment because we do it by grade level and class size until right before school starts. However, this year, because of our restart and reentry plan, we need to have our schedules already those first couple of weeks in August. So we're going to know sooner this year than in previous years. This is an unusual time because of the pandemic. And I would tell you, cross your fingers. I'll cross my fingers for you. We try very, very hard to keep siblings together. We try very hard to keep children in their home schools. But I am sorry to tell you, as Mr. Kazinsky said, I think we had 40 students not in their home school last year. Additionally, you'll be surprised, maybe, but there are 149 requests to be in other schools for various reasons. People moving across town, or family differences, or childcare differences. So it's pretty complicated, but I will offer you the same as Mrs. McMullin. Send me an email. Give me your telephone number. I'll give you a call.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Glazer. I just ask that you try your best. I personally would be devastated, and I'm sure you would as well.
You have no idea. I lose school every year.
Right? If one of your kids went to one school and went to another, that's like, I'd never.
Sorry to tell you that we have that all over the district. We have, I don't know when you moved in, but we've put forth several referendum to add space to our schools. We've added trailers just this year. We added classroom space at, he looks very handsome, Mr. Perigi. We added classroom space at Washington School and Spring Garden School. We already have trailers at Yanacaw School. So it is a challenge. Again, I will ask you to email me, and I'll give you a call. It might be easier than the open meeting.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Sure.
All right, bye.
Thank you very much. Ian?
Caterina Robles, you're up.
Hi.
Hi, Caterina. How are you?
Hi, guys. How are you? It's been a while. And all of you.
Who's that handsome guy behind you?
My dad.
Say hello to my friend that's sitting next to you.
Yes.
Hey, guys. Hello, ladies.
All right. Caterina, for all of you in the audience and watching on TV, Caterina was one of our board members and is now the pride and joy of, you're at Yale right now?
Yeah.
Remember where you're located. I've had you in different places.
Yeah.
Pride and joy of Yale right now. So welcome back. It's nice to see your beautiful smile.
Thank you. First, I wanted to say hi to everyone. Glad to see everyone's doing well. I want to say thank you, as always, for the experience on the Board of Education in my time at Nutley. It definitely prepared me for an Ivy League education. It's a lot of hard work, and I worked hard at Nutley and learned to push through it at Yale. So hopefully, got my last year done and out of the way. What I'm here to do as well is to talk about an experience I had this last semester, which is a bit unfortunate. So I actually received a phone call one afternoon while I was studying from an unknown number that asked if it was me. They asked if it was Caterina, and I said yes. I thought it was a job opportunity. It was not. And then they proceeded to say some disgusting sexual harassment and hung up. And I was shocked. I I felt nervous. I went to the police afterwards with a friend, because I was nervous to walk around campus, because I wasn't sure where it was from. After a few weeks, after I had postponed my midterms, because I was so kind of nerve-wracked, I was in the middle of New Haven, wasn't sure if it was a fraternity initiation, wasn't sure if it was someone I had met in New Haven, or if it was someone around the area. So I was nervous, I was kind of knocked off of my game for a little while. But then the cops came back with a name, and it was someone in the Army, which was interesting. So I did some Facebook stalking, and found out that it was someone I had graduated with from Nutley High School, who was also in the Army. I have no social media presence. I don't know how I crossed their mind, and after three years of really not being in contact. But it was disturbing, confusing, and it was a long three weeks before the police got my name, and before I could find out who it was. So thankfully, they went and talked to the person, told them to not contact me again. And that's where it is right now. But I've been kind of unsettled about not speaking up and not saying something to you guys. I know you have a lot on your plate with COVID, and I know you're changing a lot of curriculum, which I support with the Black Lives Matter movement, and making things more equitable for everyone. But I also just wanted to bring this to your attention, and hopefully, it won't be forgotten, that I think it's important that we revisit our sexual education curriculum, especially in terms of sexual harassment, and the consequences of sexual harassment, and what sexual harassment is. It isn't just, you know, physical. It's also emotional and mental. And I think it's important that we start from young ages, because the earlier, the better, in my opinion, to avoid these things. And that's kind of what, and I spoke with Dr. Glazer earlier about things that are being changed in the curriculum, and I'm really happy about that. But again, I just kind of want to stress the importance of also action being taken when things do, and might probably go wrong, and the importance of people feeling safe enough to go and speak about things that they have been through, or things that may happen, either inside Nutley High School, outside of Nutley High School, and there being consequences for the actions. Because I know that I would have been more nervous to come and question people and things, and if I knew there wasn't going to be some consequence, or some sort of...
Justice.
Justice, yeah, that's a good word. Thanks, Buffy.
Excellent. Well, well said is right. And I certainly, knowing you and your family, I apologize that that should happen to any person in this world. But I think Dr. Glazer can give you a little update on where we've been and what we are continuing to do.
So Caterina and I have already had a conversation, so she knows. But for the public, I'm going to answer. And you know, first of all, I'm so sorry to ever hear that anybody has to go through that. And what I'm going to answer is, I know no comfort. And I'm always proud of you. It's hard to have a courageous conversation. And you're brave, and I'm extra proud right now, truly. Even though we talked before, still just as emotional as I was this morning. So unfortunately for Caterina, maybe a little too late, but hopefully for other students, it won't be. Just in June, New Jersey adopted new sex education standards. It is intended to expand what students are taught about relationships, taught about consent. It also includes updates on teaching topics around gender identity, another big area of sexual harassment. Look like with every other change that we're advocating for, I think we're all looking to promote student safety, health, inclusiveness. At the college level, they've done a lot of training, right? I think that they've tried to do comprehensive sexual education. I'm not sure if it's proven effective against sexual violence, but I still would say it's essential to everybody's health and safety to have that training. I think that it's a clear benefit, not just at college, but even at the lower grades, right? And like you just said, honestly, if we can teach people how to communicate, if we can tell them how to share what their boundaries are, and call attention to what makes them uncomfortable, if we can call out a dangerous situation, then that's what we should be teaching kids, even as early as kindergarten. And I did say that to you this morning. I don't disagree with you about the code of conduct. You're right, we've already started that conversation in another setting, last board meeting, and a follow-up with our Black Lives Matter, Nutley for Black Lives Matter group. And that code of conduct conversation is something that already came up. It's already been put on a policy agenda. It just kind of got bumped for this meeting because of COVID and face masks. But we have made that commitment. And honestly, I said this to you before, too. It's kind of weird to be on TV seeing you. I'd give you a big hug. I love seeing your face, and I'm so sorry that this is how we're seeing you. I hear all great things about what you're doing at Nutley Family Service Bureau, and I hope we'll get to see you in person, even if it's behind a face mask, before you head back to New Haven.
Thanks for coming. And thank you. I hope you're sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ian, anything else?
Yes, Christina Mollinari, you can unmute.
Yes. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Christina Mollinari. How are you? Hi, Freddie, how are you? You don't recognize me? Nungio's wife.
I would never, I'm so sorry.
How are you? Mr. Kuzinski, I know, I think your daughter graduated with my son.
Yes, you're correct.
Nice to see you.
Yes, you too.
Okay, so I did email Dr. Glazer back in April and May. I don't know if she saw my emails. I didn't get a response. But I know that in March, we had to go remotely with the children. I work for Montclair State University, so we had to do the same thing, pretty quick. But some of the parents, and my son has two children in Radcliffe, have expressed some concerns that the way the district came up with the plan about the remote learning really wasn't working in some cases. So we need to come up with a better plan for the kids that are in special ed especially, or kindergarten through sixth grade, due to the fact that it did give a lot of the parents most of the teaching responsibilities when we went remote. And I can sympathize, because I had to do a lot of the teaching to my grandchildren, because my son is a single parent. So thank God my daughter got laid off, and I was off from work for a while, and they helped out a lot with the two kids. And other parents' concerns are too, that it's a lot of work. You have to go to different areas to go get the homework or whatever. It's just a lot on the parents. So also, the special ed children, personal experience with my granddaughter, that she is in special ed. I think they need that one-to-one with their special ed teacher, so they don't lose the skills of what the special ed teachers are teaching, due to the fact that I'm not a special ed teacher. My daughter is not. My husband is computer literate. He only knows short-order cooking and landscaping, that's it. You know that, Freddie. He's not computer literate, and we have to sympathize with the parents that cannot be home. And grandparents and other siblings are home with the children. So I've been hearing a lot from parents in town. We're well-known, like I said. We've been here a long time. I've expressed my concerns to you, Dr. Glazer, in April and May, and I just felt like I was being ignored, since I own four properties in this town, so I think, and a small business. So I thought like, okay, what did I say wrong? Did I say something wrong? So the children from kindergarten through sixth, that's where they get the basics and everything, that's where they learn everything. So in Siddle Grove, my cousin told me that the teachers there, they were on Zoom with their children half of the day, like a regular classroom, the entire classroom, and they taught like a regular classroom. And maybe we can try something different. I felt like it was hard for me to grasp. It was hard for my daughter to grasp, my son, since he's a single parent. And now that we're going back to work in August, it's going to be difficult for these kids to get all that homework done and not have the parents there 100% to teach them and be like teachers. So I don't know what, my suggestion was for the teachers to be live with their class half a day, minimum, and then break for lunch, and then maybe assign homework on the lessons they learned in the morning, and then the parents can work with them that way. What do we do with working parents that don't have anybody to watch their children? Right? We have to come up with a good plan for everybody here, because I'm being overwhelmed by parents in this town. So, you know, that's my beef here tonight. And I've been in this town for 40 years, and I love the school system, and I love everyone in this town.
So thank you so much. You did nothing to offend me. I just heard my email, though, and maybe you use a different name or a different last name, because I have no email, not one, let alone two. So I apologize, because I would, of course, answer you. Number one, that's the first thing. Second thing, while we're having all of these conversations, you're right on the same page as we are. We want as much instructional time for students as you do, for all students. We're looking for that equity. We've done a ton of, we've surveyed at the end of last spring, we've done, I think we had 300 parents in those debrief sessions, and got another 600 comments just on our remote learning from last year. We've certainly learned a lot. And I would tell you that our instructional team has certainly planned something different right there. Forget, you know, we aren't ready to talk about a plan. Most of our staff are also working parents. The person I'm just about to introduce you to is a working mom. Mr. Banyar, our assistant superintendent, is a working dad with little kids. So believe me when I tell you, we have board members, sorry, Eric, I see you nodding. We have board members with small children. All of us understand. And our staff is in the same boat. So you have to know that our conversations are very inclusive of the working parent. I am going to introduce you, oh, I hope she didn't just disappear. I was just going to introduce you, I don't know where she went, to Janine Locan Solo. She's our Director of Curriculum Instruction, oh, there you are, she's back, and Assessment. And I would like for her to talk just a little bit. And then Kent, if you have something to add, I guess you can add, I guess, I guess. Go ahead, Janine.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer, and thank you for those comments. You know, I think a lot of what you're saying is really consistent with feedback that we heard from parents, both in the survey results and in some of the task force meetings. So we're being really, really deliberate about the way that we schedule this next round of hybrid instruction. So we're looking at a little bit of a more structure, to your point, with some live instruction. You know, in the spring, I think a lot of what the live instruction looked like was a little bit social-emotional. I think they wanted to connect with their students, the teachers, and things like that. And we find that really, really important, especially because we went out to virtual learning with very little notice. But what we're looking at for the fall is to provide some professional learning for teachers around what that live session could look like, so that we're really supporting working families. And we're also being really mindful of that as we think about scheduling options to try to bring students in on a regular basis, and then have really consistent schedules when they're not in for virtual learning, because we found from a lot of the surveys and a lot of what we know to be best practice, that if we can give a more consistent schedule to the kids, that will help as well. We're also looking to bring in some of the specials areas, like art and music, in live Google meets, so that students can have that instruction live, and maybe some extension activities or office hours as well. So definitely, here are your concerns. Thank you very much. I had my camera off, and I was writing down some notes from what you were saying, so I apologize, I didn't mean to disappear. But please feel free to follow up with me. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have. But just know that your concerns have been echoed among other parents as well, and they're definitely part of what we're taking into consideration.
Well, the other issue was teaching math to my granddaughter. When I learned math, it was, and she's like, no, that's wrong, Grandma, that's wrong, you can't, that's wrong. I was like, what?
Yes, we learned the shortcuts, and it's so funny, because we even said that. And some of our teachers actually were starting to hold some Google meets with parents even, just saying like, don't worry, the algorithm that you used for regrouping and subtraction, we're getting there in two weeks. But right now, the conceptual understanding, we're going to be doing some strategies that kind of build up to that. So it's not that we're doing it wrong when we kind of teach the algorithms we're more familiar with. I think it's just that the way that the Math in Focus and the new math standards are written, they're more about a deeper conceptual understanding. So they're really getting kids to use manipulatives and kind of understand the math. Like, if you think about a subtraction with regrouping, right? We know all that. You just, I don't know why, you just go next door and you borrow, and then this becomes a 10, and that becomes a this. And our program just builds up to that in a different way than maybe what parents are used to. So I think that's a great suggestion. Our Math in Focus does have some parent videos, and I'm not sure, well, some teachers are utilizing that, but that might be something that's worth repeating to them and worth resharing out with teachers, because I think you're right. I think some of that frustration also comes with wanting to help your child, but also wanting to not give the wrong information, right? Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate you listening to me.
Absolutely, no, thank you.
Nice to see everyone.
Thank you.
Tell Lumsy how I said hello.
Say hello to everybody. Ian, we have anyone else in?
Yes, Laura Del Tufo, can I mute now?
Ian, remind her again if you can. Laura, you can unmute.
I see you're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Check your microphone, and we'll circle back to you.
The microphone might be off.
Yeah, I was gonna say, she could be double muted if she's using a headset or a mic. You might have to turn that on, too.
Or if you hit the F1 button by accident, it shuts your mic off. I learned that the hard way.
Look who woke up, the computer literate. Good job, Erica. All right, Ian, we'll go back there if we can. If we want to go on to somebody else, we can do that.
Okay, next, Anne Marie Reich.
Yes, hello, everybody, good evening. My name is Anne Marie Reich, and I'm with Nutley for Black Lives. Unfortunately, you won't be able to see my face, but I know I've been to a few of these meetings, so hopefully, my voice is a little bit familiar. So I just wanted to read out what myself and my organization has basically come to in terms of officiating some objectives that we would like to suggest to the Board of Education in terms of the curriculum and how things are operating in the school systems right now. First, I think that we need to address the disproportionalities for Black, Indigenous, and all people of color regarding COVID cases in the reopening for the 2021 school year. Fulfill the Amistad Commission by updating the curriculum. Have detailed goals and strategies for each department in grades K through 12 to make it more inclusive, and involve discussions of systemic racism. Update the Student Conduct Code to protect students and teachers from racism, including creating and implementing a new anti-racist and racial harassment policy, which, like Dr. Glazer said, we've already been in conversation, which is great. Mandate continuous anti-racism training for all teachers and staff in the district via... Um, mandate continuous anti-racism training for all teachers and staff in the district by a reputable um BIPOC, which is just the abbreviation for Black, Indigenous, People of Color-led organization. Create district-wide equity initiatives with input of BIPOC equity and education consultants. Create an equity team made of BIPOC equity and education experts and consultants hired to advocate for students of color. Maintain organized and open communication, including a report on actions taken for parents of student of color. Close the equity gap in academic performance regarding underrepresentation and disproportionality. Close the equity gap in school discipline regarding disproportionality. Address racial inequities in special education classifications, as well as address the inequalities in English language and learner education. And then just to remind everybody, the Amistad Commission ensures that the Department of Education and Public Schools of New Jersey identify materials and texts which integrate the history and contributions of African Americans and the descendants of the African diaspora. Um, while we know that obviously that has been um instilled since about 2002, I would like to say, I don't have the exact year, but um we would like to see that more fully fulfilled in the curriculum.
Thank you. And I'm sure if you looked at our district goals and our board goals, you'll see that we, we have, after meeting with you, obviously before then, but after meeting with you, we continued our conversation about where we're going with your concerns and our concerns as board members and citizens of Nutley also. So we're working um towards resolving a good part of those goals. Dr. Glazer?
All I was gonna say is thank you, Anne Marie. Um, and we um, I emailed with um Catherine. We're trying to set a date for next week, and we did invite to that meeting our coordinator of English Language Arts, our um coordinator of History and Social Studies, our coordinator of ESL bilingual. So I think for most of what we talked about previously and what you've put forth as um conversation topics, I think we'll be on the right page for when we come together. Um, and I think we're all looking forward to it. So thank you.
For sure. Thank you so much.
Ian, have we found um anyone else?
Uh, yes, Catherine Peck.
Hello. Hi. So um I wanted to refer to the first point on our list of objectives that Anne Marie wrote, which is address the disproportionalities for BIPOC regarding COVID-19 cases in the reopening plans for the 2020, 2021 school year. So um I have brought this up a few times um in more private meetings that we really wanted to make sure that these disproportionalities are addressed in the reopening plan. Um, and we really sympathize with all the issues going on, especially um what Christina Molinari said about, you know, the disproportionalities in special ed. Um, so there's a, there's obviously a lot to cover, and we understand that. Um, but it, it is well known that across the board, regardless of age, that the disproportionalities regarding hospitalization and deaths in COVID um are, are disproportionately towards BIPOC. So we want to make sure that that is explicitly addressed in the reopening plans. So if, and um I know we did speak um Dr. Glazer, and I'm really excited about our meeting in two weeks with the curriculum. Um, the, the officers of curriculum. But um we do have a group of, of people from from Clare Moss and, and other equity experts that are more than willing to speak with everyone on these disparities and what could be done this week. Um, so I was hoping maybe we could set a date for that.
So I, I wish that I could tell you I have any literally spare time, but what I would invite is the same way I invited you to our Health and Wellness Task Force um to, to talk. I have safety and security tomorrow and configuration and infrastructure on Thursday. Um, we tomorrow, the four o'clock meeting tomorrow, I don't know if they're available for that, but at the four o'clock meeting tomorrow, we'll be talking um in depth about our screening, about our daily contact tracing. We'll be talking about some of our protocols um that were required to put in place by the CDC. We spent some time today with the um principals, actually looking at the space, looking at airflow. We had some, some really boring conversations, in all honesty, about water fountains and
Right.
servers and things. Um, the airflow um actually seems to be one of the biggest issues um because of asthma, because of some other contraindications that um create that disproportionality. So again, I, I'm happy, just you know, you know where to find me. I'll be happy to send you the link, and you can invite um those people. Like I said, I think the best one is tomorrow, Safety and Security um at four o'clock.
Okay, um that, we'll, I'll reach out to them. So in the, in the meetings that I did attend, um, it was said that, that the, these disparities will not be explicitly addressed. Are, are they on the agenda for this next meeting?
Oh, so no, the, in the task force, there, there are different topics and different task forces.
Right. So yeah, when we're
Tomorrow is Safety and Security. So we're gonna look at, like I said, temperature-taking, symptoms, airflow, sanitizing, protocols, all of the, like I said, it'll, maybe the Clare Moss people think it's very exciting and it's their avocation. Um, Michael Perigi, if you're still on the call, I'm sorry if I'm disrespecting you. But i- it's um for me, reading the CDC guidelines that change every day and reading um the, the different protocols is, is um not my favorite part of this process.
Okay, so are any of the meetings in the next week, um, are the disproportionalities I'm talking about going to be on the agenda for any?
So, so it's, I wouldn't say it's explicit, Catherine. We, I'm gonna say, if you know me at all yet, I wouldn't sleep at night if one kid or one staff member got sick. So when I'm telling you we're looking at airflow, and I'm telling you that I'm learning about Meza levels of filters and LEED standards of HIPAA, Michael, are you proud of me? Look how much I've learned. Um, and I'm talking about touch points, and I'm talking about that for every single person.
Right.
Person walks through the door. And I'm well aware that we have some people at a higher risk and well aware that we have some people with um contravening indications. That's gonna be a sep, not this week's survey, but a separate survey, because we actually have to look at our individual spaces for those people. For instance, um not supposed to put somebody um in those spaces where there's air conditioning. Most people would assume that air conditioning is the perfect thing to do and send me medical notes. But the truth is that the air conditioning actually disperses um the moisture throughout the air and throughout the room. So, so those kinds of things are, are very specific conversations. And yes, I do think that there'll be a time for um people who are um identified, either self-identified or otherwise, at high risks to engage in those conversations.
Okay, so we believe that in order to make sure that everyone is safe, we have to explicitly address the disparities that we're talking about. So we do not fully agree with um the idea that there's this overarching holistic view without the conversation about race.
Well, no, I just said we have to have the conversation, high risk and contravening indications. And that, that's partially a race conversation, but it's partially a health and safety conversation.
Of course. I mean, it's all about the health.
It'll, it'll be a balanced conversation.
So when, so will that conversation be happening before the plan is put out publicly?
Wait.
Well, the survey asking if you're, for people to be high risk, yes. I can't tell from, from a survey, from enrollment data that you're, you're at a higher risk. I can't tell that just
Right. No, no, yeah, I get that.
People have to identify that. And that is not the first thing. The first thing is the timing, the plan, the schedule. Although we are talking about, like I said, the health and safety tomorrow, and it's the perfect conversation if you want to join us, and it's the perfect conversation if you want to invite um your colleagues from Clare Moss.
And, and if you don't, if you don't mind, I would interrupt right now. I don't mind continuing the conversation, Catherine. I, I have other people I would like to get through. I, I, I know you have conversed with Dr. Glazer. Maybe we can con- continue that conversation offline. Or when I get through with some other people that have concerns, we can come back to you if you don't mind.
Yeah, we could come back to it.
Okay.
We could.
Just email me, Catherine.
Ian, anyone else?
Yes, uh, Yarubi Petitra.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, my name is Yarubi Petitra. My kids go to Yanacaw School District. Um, I live in 112 Pershing Avenue. I'm not sure, Dr. Glazer, if you received my email. I emailed uh last Monday, wanted to be part of one of your task force, perhaps. I too, like, uh, some of the members have spoken, um have some concerns with the proposed, I guess, plan for the fall as a working parent. Um, I work for a higher ed institution as well, and I can completely understand um just the difficulties of coming up with a plan that works for everyone. I am on those committees for my university and completely understand the process and the conversations that need to happen for the wellness and safety of everybody. Um, and I just would like to be part of those conversations. Um, I, to be honest, have not seen information about surveys other than the one maybe in June that came out. I'm not sure if anything else has come out. Um, I was a little bit confused. Um, as clearly a plan is proposed, but um there aren't many choices to choose from. It's almost like this is the plan, and um we will hear about it later. It seems like one plan was put out, but now there are no options to choose from or to discuss. So just one minute, we can speak about that.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but there is no plan per se. There is no set plan per se. As you will, if you haven't heard, but in our conversation, we are looking at multiple plans, as Dr. Glazer will allude to. But, but what's been talked about are just plans. Um, who you, you should be part of that conversation, but all the parents in Nutley are invited to be part of that conversation. But again, they are just plans that we're trying to come to a final resolve, and we're not there yet.
But, I'm sorry.
So you know, I said at the beginning of the meeting, we, we have not shared a plan. There is no draft plan. There's no schedule. All we had was our board retreat on Thursday night. The Board of Education can only have conversations in this forum altogether, where they're able to listen and ask questions. They don't have the opportunity at any other time except in public. So they had the opportunity to listen to a lot of different ideas, but only ideas about instruction. We didn't talk about the day, we didn't, we didn't really talk about anything. We answered questions. Um, the survey, the second survey is Wednesday. That's the virtual versus um the hybrid model. Um, and, and honestly, our, our, our whole time, the timeline has been, if you saw it at the end of June, it hasn't changed since the guidelines came out, June 26th, that we would announce a plan to the community by June 4th. We have had hundreds of people participate in this process. To have you participate as well. Um, I just um looked and maybe, um, again, maybe your email is different than your name, but I don't have it come up under my task force. Ian has put my email in the chat. Just email me again, um, and let me know which, which you're interested in. I'm assuming it's Curriculum and Instruction on Friday at nine. I'm just assuming that, but you can tell me different when you email me.
Um, yeah, I'll be, I'll resend the email. That's not a problem. I guess maybe, and I, and I actually listened to, to the recording of your board retreat, and maybe it wasn't clear that this was, this was just one idea. It just seemed like this was the idea that they're, they're voting on or thinking about or finalizing. And perhaps it might be helpful just as a comment to add the several different schedules that you guys are looking at or voting on or because it, it seemed like only one was, for, you know, per, uh, each school level, kindergarten, oh, that wasn't out yet, but K through, through six and, and middle school and high school, there was one kind of idea that was presented, but not, not the others, if that makes sense.
Middle school and high school is much further down the road in the conversation. It happened very quickly for them. It's different with older children. Um, different considerations. For the elementary, I think we, I can't even tell you how many we've been through, different hybrids, different times. Um, and, and again, some we've had to rule out because we can't staff it, or we don't have the um capacity, meaning the classroom space, or we have too much enrollment to be able to do. But for the most part, we're, we're still, um, and I hope that Friday morning at nine is it. For the most part, we, we've been looking at the instructional model. And to be clear, um, I know I said this um earlier too. I think we're all on the same page. You, you're talking to educators, the same as you are. We, we want the most instructional time possible, given the um health and safety guidelines and the mandates that we're, we're coming under.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Yeah.
No, thank you. Ian, anyone else?
Yes, Laura Del Tufo. Uh, is your microphone working?
Hi, thank you, everyone. I am a perfect example why, as a parent, I shouldn't teach my child, especially technology, because um it's not my strength. So I thank you first for taking the time um to, to meet and to hear some of our comments. Really, I just have a comment to share. Um, I am one of just many working parents who have formed a committee um to discuss some of our specific needs and concerns. And as the board is aware, you already received a letter from our committee as well as a PowerPoint summarizing some of our concerns as well as some potential solutions. We've also developed a petition um that's been created. We've received about 200 signatures within 24 hours supporting the voice of the working parent. And we recognize that this is very complex. Um, there are a lot of regulations. You've already alluded to all of the things that you have to speak about, and we absolutely understand that. Um, but we wanted to ensure that the voice of the working parent is represented. Um, we do have concerns about our children's emotional health, about their academic achievement, and really, working parents' inability to maintain employment if the final plan has a return to school schedule that's very minimal of in-school instruction. Realistically, parents may not be able to maintain their employment. So I think that's something that's very important to take into account. Um, that we do appreciate, Dr. Glazer, your invitation to meet with our committee. Um, we really look forward to talking to you perhaps sometime this week. I know, as you mentioned, your schedule is very busy. Um, but we'd like the opportunity to really review all of the topics that we've discussed as a very little group. So thank you very much.
Oh, no, thank you. I appreciate your letter. Um, and, and I'm sure you know this already, but board members that are here with you tonight are working parents, some single working parents with children in the district, grandchildren in the district. So we live through the same concerns that you do, trying to maintain our lifestyle, our job, and trying to educate our children the best we can. So I certainly appreciate your input, appreciated the letter, and, and we are very cognizant of your concerns and, and all the citizens in Nutley, their concerns. And we're trying to come to a complete consensus, which is mind-boggling. Dr. Glazer?
No, all I was gonna say is thank you for your letters, PowerPoint. I did respond um to, to each of those. And, and I'll say it again. I think we're all on the same page. I don't think anybody is advocating for a short amount of time. Again, I have Kent, Janine, Erica on this call, all of them working parents, um with small children. And by small children, I mean lower elementary grades, kindergarten. Um, they couldn't do their job either. So we're, we're well aware, and I, I'm not sure where the message got out, that, that this was a plan or that this was, you know, a done deal. But it is not, and we're, we're happy to have you. I gave you, Laura, my um telephone number, so you can call me anytime. It's easier to call me and then squeeze in um than to try and find me this way. Um, honestly. So you, you have my number. Give me a call. And I just wanted to say, I'm so sorry, I, I can't see your name on my screen, because I have the chat. But the mom from Yanacaw that we just talked to, I did find your email, and I'm so sorry. I don't know why it's in my spam, but I do see it. Nutley's Back to School Task Force, and I will send you the um dates and the link for Friday.
Thank you. And I do just want to respond to your question about the draft. Um, I think the confusion is, if, if you look back at the virtual meeting from last week, Dr. Glazer, you actually used the word draft plan. So I think that's where the confusion came into play. play, that, you know, watching the video, it really did give the impression that this was near final. So, I'm happy that we were not at that place, and we're very excited to continue conversations with you.
Well, great. And thank you. And I'll do a better job while we're talking of, of being clear of what we're saying, because this process, like I said, I'm pretty proud of the fact that we've had hundreds of people participate. Originally, we were gonna try and limit it to small groups. I don't know if you were in the June meeting, the first June meetings. And honestly, there were just so many voices that we didn't feel that that was possible. So, we just keep having meetings. We just keep adding meetings. Ask Kent. He'll tell you, one too many meetings for him lately. He's done. But we're, we're almost there. And I do see in the chat, so I want to answer that, Mrs. Molinari. We committed to communicating to the community by August 4th, what the, what the plan will be. So, we have, we have a ways to go between the survey and trying to figure out, believe it or not, at this point, it's really the health and safety pieces. You know, how do we get, how do we get students into school with temperature-taking and everybody in a face covering? And how do we, you know, again, follow the daily contact tracing? What do we do for isolation if somebody does have symptoms? And again, of course, the CDC, right when I thought we had it, sent me new guidelines just to annoy me. You know, we, again, we think we're in a good place with our hybrid instruction. And on Friday night, we got new guidelines for virtual. So, the conversation continues, but we did commit to that August 4th. Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Del Tufo, also. Ian, are there any, are there any other one, anyone else to be heard?
There's no additional people in the chat now.
Can I, can I just say something? There's no one in the chat, real quick?
Actually, Catherine's requesting to speak again.
I, just because we're on the topic. So, I just want to, for any parents that are on the call, and just, I just want everybody to know, and I know everyone's been saying it 100 times, and you probably don't want to hear it 100 more, but I am the single working parent that understands everything that everyone's going through. My child also receives special services, so I know. So, even if anyone ever has an inkling or a thought, everybody really is thinking of every single thing they can outside the box, I promise you that. And I just, like Dr. Glaser said, everybody's in a similar boat. People have different circumstances, but everybody is thinking of everything. I don't want anyone to ever feel, or nobody on the board ever wants anyone to ever feel like anyone's thoughts or feelings or their situation is being put by the wayside. That's not happening. Unfortunately, we can't come up with 4,200 plans. That would be the best thing we could do, and that would solve everything. So, just being on the policy committee and on the academic committee right now, it's a struggling time, but everybody is truly and honestly doing everything they can. And I just wanted to make sure that even from the working parent, everybody understands that. That's, that, that's the primary concern, is the children right now. And, and not just them, obviously, but everyone around them, right? If, it takes a village. If everybody can't pitch in, and everybody can't do it, we're not gonna get it done. So, just so, I just wanted to say that to everybody.
Thank you, Erica. And Catherine, you're back again. We've talked about quite a bit of your issues already. I, I hope we're not going to be redundant and relive them. While we know your concerns, they're put out there, but go ahead. It's yours for a while.
Sure. Could you just remind me, Dr. Glaser, what the name of the meeting tomorrow is?
Tomorrow is safety and security. It's at four o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So, before, I feel like I didn't really get an answer. Before August 4th, will we be able to have a meeting with other people who might not be able to attend that meeting tomorrow?
I don't know that it'll be necessary before we put out the plan, but we can absolutely have a meeting before we put out the health and safety plan. The fourth is really like the schedule, the time of the day, and then we still have to deal with, we still have to deal with all, believe me, all of the stuff that we're gonna talk about.
Okay. See, we, we did not know that. We were underdressed, and it was all at the same.
Believe me. Michael, I don't know, again, I don't know if Michael's still on the call, but if he thought we had two weeks to figure it out.
Yeah, well, that, that was our concern, because we were being pushed aside. So, what is the deadline for that date, then?
So, if, while the calendar did get voted, right? So, the students return to school the Tuesday after Labor Day. The staff returns the September 1st. So, for me, I need to have it in place by August 17th, because just in case we're doing new teacher orientation in person, because I'm assuming they're gonna want to see their buildings and wanna, they can't just be hired online and never see the district. So, I've got to assume that my drop-dead time is, when is that? The Friday before. So, the August 14th, drop-dead day to have it all in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Ian, is there anyone else?
Yes, Yarubi Petitra.
Yes. I'm sorry. I, I think it might be helpful for all of us on the call, if you can walk us through the process of kind of the voting, or when the plan is out, how much time is it gonna be open for the public? I think that, that also has been confusing, just the process of, of voting on a plan, or does it just get put out? Is there a public comment period? By when is the final, final, final plan going to be?
So, so that whatever we come to, has, we have to come to a decision. So, we're hearing hundreds of voices now, and whatever we come up with for August 4th is going to be, and I'm not gonna say set in stone, but it's going to be the schedule, because we committed to parents, just, just so, again, I know you'll be with us on Friday, but we committed to parents that we would let them know the schedule. There are a number of people that need to let their employer know. There are people that are working with their family to do shared coverage. In one of our first meetings, there was an idea put out there, great idea, actually. I'm, I'm, I don't know how old you are, I can't tell. But when I was a young mom, we spent half of our summer figuring out the carpool, so that we only had to do it once, like every 10 days. So, we talked about that process of how people could cohort with people to, to do the virtual learning day or another day. So, we, we did commit that we would give everybody that time to be able to make those plans. I, I'm not sure of the length of the day. Again, you'll hear those conversations, but we are working really, really hard to extend the, the length of the day, in recognition of not, again, all working parents, whoever, whoever they may be.
Okay. Do you think more kind of sample working plans we'll put out there of the, of the day, of the school day? Because again, the only one that I guess the public has been purvey to is the one that was presented last week.
Kent and Janine will be there Friday. They have all of the different models. We can talk, we can recap, since it sounds like we'll have some new people in the conversation. We can recap where we've come from.
Maybe the last two or three that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian, is there anyone else?
There do not appear to be any additional people asking to comment.
Thank you. At this time, I'll address any old business to come before the board. Any new business to come before the board?
Mr. President, I only have one question. The superintendent earlier discussed air conditionings. Can you elaborate on what you were talking about as far as air conditioning and heating and COVID and airflow, please?
Certainly. Mr. Perigi still with us, or is Dr. Glaser gonna pick it up?
I just didn't unmute. What I said was, just give me a second. My legal pad with all of that stuff is across the room. So, give me a second.
Mr. Perigi, did you hear the question?
Yes, we're looking into airflow and make sure that each classroom has proper airflow. But Dr. Glaser's talk, reference to was window air conditioning units that don't have return air on themselves. They don't recommend using those air conditions in the classrooms.
So, what, what I was talking about, Mr. Riley, is that there are three forms of air movement, I've come to learn. Mr. Perigi just talked about the most important one, and that's outside air availability. That's the, the best, trying to get the outside air in. Open windows is the second one. And the third category doesn't fall into either of those, meaning there's no outside air availability and no open windows. So, with our UNIVENTS, we have ventilation, right? But as Mr. Perigi said, those window air units are a bad choice because they spread the particles. If a kid sneezes or coughs, even in their mask, if they're not wearing the right kind of mask, the air is dissipated all throughout the room in that air conditioning, and there's not a way to filter those, those window units. So, we have to look at different kinds of ventilation.
What about heating?
I'm only hearing air. Michael, do you know heat?
The heating units have return air. They're talking about window units that do not return the indoor air through the air conditioner itself. It's not a, it's not a return system that's strong enough to clean a classroom within a lot of time. It's just, they're not, they're not efficient air scrubbers at all. Don't know if that explains it.
And one of the things they talked about, Mr. Riley, is that fans are actually better than window units, because you can direct the air, you can direct the air. It's gonna be hot, definitely hot in some of those rooms, but at least you could direct the airflow.
Maybe this conversation, maybe this conversation, Ben, can be continued in our admin meeting.
Yes, or, like I said, join us tomorrow at four, any of you.
Thank you. Any other new business to come before the board? I'll entertain an adjournment?
Motion. Second.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thanks for being here. Good night. Have fun, Janine.
Thank you.